Hey, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. The board meeting for the Lake Bluff Library and see soon as we get our stuff together here. Jenny, would you be able to do the roll call?
Yeah. Yeah, trustee.
Here.
Trustee. Trustee Jardine here. Uh, trustee Hade.
Yourself.
Oh, and trustee Graziano.
And then the others to say their absence.
Oh, and then we have trustee Shaw with the absence and trustee Freedom in in accent and trustee that. Absent.
It's. Thanks.
Right, and Renee, would you like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would be glad to. I welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. Um, are there any additions to the agenda?
I want just one.
Yes.
September twentieth.
Oops. Correction, the date is. Thank you. I just went straight from eyes to mouth. I didn't go through the brain. Um, today is October seventeenth.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-three, this, we've already held this September meeting. Sorry.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Um, so any other additions to the agenda? Okay. Um, there seem to be none, so.
We should check Zoom. Do we have?
Oh, do we have anybody attending on Zoom?
Public. Any public? Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, so um, this is the opportunity to address the board. So ladies of friends, everybody, okay. All right. Um, no one wishes to address the board at this time, so that takes us to the resolution for National Friends of Libraries Week. So I will, with your permission, read the resolution. Um, this is the recognition of Friends of the Library for National Friends of Libraries Week. Whereas October fifteenth to twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three has been declared National Friends of Libraries Week by United for Libraries, a division of the American Library Association. And whereas the Friends of the Lake Bluff Library support the mission and vision of the Lake Bluff Public Library and its commitment to excellence. And whereas the Friends promote the joys and benefits of literacy and learning by investing time and effort in raising supplementary funds to enhance library resources and programming. And whereas the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present. And whereas the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. And now, therefore, be it resolved uh, by the Board of Trustees of Lake Bluff Public Library that we could proclaim October fifteenth to twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, as Friends of Libraries Week at Lake Bluff Public Library. We encourage everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to improve our library and community. So thank you. Adopted this seventeenth day of October, two thousand twenty-three pursuant to a roll call vote as follows.
Then you.
Okay.
Roll call.
So, um.
All right, look at me.
Yes.
Um, trustee.
Jardine.
Jardine. Oh, trustee Jardine. Trustee Hade.
Yes.
Trustee Church.
Yes.
Trustee Graziano. Yes.
It is anonymous. Or.
Here.
Okay. Okay, so our resolution has passed, so we can sign.
Yes, so Bill, I've added your name as treasure as well.
Okay. This is a different version.
It is with the people that are here. Yes.
And I thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
We'd love to welcome you for a picture.
Right.
It's up there. Nice background. Oh, trustee, please.
Let's wait for Jenny, so yeah.
I'm just trying to get those ones.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Here, trustee first.
Great. Thank you. One, two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm glad to be part of the community and help and projects and all the great stuff that goes on around here. It really is a cornerstone of the community. So we're thrilled to be part of it. And I think you've noticed that Jenny, one of our meetings, our, our membership has really grown and expanded across generations. So I think it's really great to see all the great people participating and um, lots of great inputs, lots of great ideas, and everybody's excited to do what we can to help Renee and keep our library strong.
Yeah, we're so lucky.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. I took that off tomorrow.
Thanks for me.
Yes. Yes. Yes, and you're all invited to any type of.
Yes, I'm looking forward to that. It'll be great. Thank you, friends.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your evening.
You too.
Okay.
Thank you, Janie.
You're welcome. All right, so um, the next item on the agenda is the um meeting minutes. Approval of the meeting minutes, so does anybody have um any changes, additions, corrections to the minutes of the September twentieth meeting? Yeah, I guess I will, I will be looking for a motion to accept.
So given Jardine and George were the only ones at that meeting.
Then I guess we have to.
The two of you. Yes.
We've been running on a skeleton crew.
There's a theme tonight. There's a theme.
Yes, okay, well, I will move to accept the minutes as written.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, yeah.
Okay, okay. Now, I'll oppose if there are none, so the um, minutes are approved as written. Okay. Next, we are on to the Director's Report, so it's all you, Renee.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. I have um, several topics I'd like to cover. Um, and the first one is the topic I led with last month, which is um human resources and administration specifically related to staffing. Um, I wanted to start first, though, by saying how grateful I am for this incredible team of staff that have worked their butts off to keep the library open to the public and providing as best customer service as we possibly can. Um, we continue to see significant staffing strain on the organization with planned and unplanned absences. And I've included a couple of documentations for your review because I'm very data-driven, and so I thought it was very helpful to potentially review the differences between the amount of leave time used in August compared to September. So um, the documents that you have in your packet, um, you will note that the, um, the first one is eight oh one, and that is August, and you'll note that we had approximately um, one thousand nine hundred and forty hours worked. Um, compare that with September. That is a reduction at one thousand six hundred and thirty-eight hours worked of over three hundred hours of planned and unplanned leave. Um, we currently have, um, so I just thought that that number was very, very uh, dramatic and specific to share with you. We continue to have um, strain on staffing, and because of this, we've had to make decisions to not staff our youth services desk, which is a very difficult one to make given that the youth services department has only one full-time staff member in it, and that is our great manager, Eliza Jarvey. Um, it's also something of concern for me, given safety is of the utmost importance in the children's department. But we have three service points in our public library, the youth services desk, the circulation desk, and the reference desk. And at any one point or another, I remember Sandy and Janie and I, when we had our building and grounds committee meeting, um, we had two staff in the building at that point. It was um, a part-timer at the circulation desk and myself who was attending the meeting in the, in this room. And so, um, and that was a really extenuating circumstance. I would never recommend that the library be open with only two staff members, but given the importance of building and grounds work, we kept that meeting and um, staff did an amazing job keeping the library open. Um, a lot of work has had to be delayed um, because of this, and I've included that list for you. Some of it includes policy work, some of it includes the building and grounds project manager job description. Um, there are, you know, a various, uh, varying levels of priority, of course, but it is um, not, it is not um, missed or not unnoticed by me to see, you know, some really important work for the library. Um, given that the importance is to keep the building open, number one, for the public as much as we can. Um, and so we're going to talk about this a little bit later in the new business um, with, and I'm going to provide more context about our current staffing levels and um, a suggestion that I, Bonnie and I have discussed, Bill and I have discussed, and um, other board members and I have discussed. Um, so I just wanted to share with the board the status of staffing. Um, we continue to have um, one particular staff member on FMLA, um, and that's a full-time staff member, so that, and we only have six full-timers, so that is um, we are very happy to support a very mandated program such as FMLA. And also, um, it does have a, an effect on the rest of the staff here in the organization. And at the end of the day, our, my hope is for the organization to give the best quality of customer service we can. And so right now, we are struggling to do that. Um, I think the public is taking notice. Um, I haven't had any direct comments, but um, just given the fact that the youth desk has had to sign up more often than we would like to see. Um, so, you know, I wanted to share that context with you all. And so um, in addition to that, um, I shared information about um, work that I did on um the bomb threats uh, that uh, have been going on in public libraries. I attended an FBI training in September. I did another one this month, actually, which will be the next board report. Um, and so I shared an update with what was going on with the bomb threats at this time. An update as of now, though, um, an arrest has been made, as I've shared with the board, um, in conjunction with um, a collaborative jurisdiction uh, investigative report from a lot of communities um, in identifying this particular suspect. So a suspect is in custody, um, related to um, these threats, and I think the the amount of relief is very palpable. Um, and also, you know, we will welcome Police Chief Matt Smazinski and his deputy this Friday for a training on um, swatting and bomb threats, and we're going to go over a lot of the information that has been distributed to staff these past couple months. Um, because just because an arrest was made doesn't mean that we want to forget all the things that we've learned. Um, and so we are going to take this opportunity to collaborate with the Lake Bluff Police and um, increase that learning. So um, that is something I wanted to share. We continue to still be um, understaffed. We have interviews just this week for um, the position of um, part-time associate. The vacant position when we did our internal hire. We also still have a vacant position of the substitute librarian. That was the new position that was created to provide us with approximately fifteen to twenty hours a month of respite. Um, this position is a librarian position because one of the responsibilities will be um, person in charge of the library. Um, and there's always um, one person, there should always be one person in charge of the library during open hours. And um, as this person is a sub-librarian, that responsibility will be part of their scope of work. I have interviews scheduled essentially first um, week or two of November for that position. Um, we are thrilled to have hired Vanessa Howland, um, an internal hire for our youth librarian position. Um, and I just want to say congratulations, Vanessa. We're so excited. We can keep you. Um, you have proven yourself, um, in many ways to be an impactful member of our library, and I just want to say congratulations officially. Um, even though we've been very, very lean, uh, staff have been completing a lot of training. We have new staff. People are completing their um, onboarding training. We have a brand-new um, notary. Um, Claire Osada, who offered and volunteered to be a notary for the library since we've been in getting increased requests for notary services. And so she and Martha, you know, completed their notary training. Um, and intellectual freedom is a topic of late with banned books week, and so um, staff being very interested to upkeep that training as well. I do want to highlight, however, um, given all of our staffing limitations, passport applications are down. And from a director's point of view, I am um, more concerned with the well-being of staff and the opening of the building. Um, and so when we talk about budgets and when you look at revenue, you will see that number go down. Um, but I just want to say that uh, it, even if we had all three staff members ready to do passports, the, the need for passports always outweighs and always exceeds whatever staffing we had to it. So we are making more references to other locations at this time, um, but that is really done to uh, support um, keeping the building open and our desks staffed um, as we continue to experience these staffing challenges. Um, a couple of more things that I want to highlight of successes. Um, we had a very successful collaborative partnership with the district, school district sixty-five for a back-to-school birthday bash. It was a welcoming event for families who were either new to the district or new to the school year to come to the library, learn about the library, and um, youth services manager Eliza Jarvey did a fantastic job with her team to create a lot of engaging um, activities for them. And also, we were um, really excited to have a teacher from District sixty-five onsite during that event. So families could meet the library, but also meet their teacher, get to know them. Um, and in addition to that wildly successful event, um, something also wildly successful was um, this year's birthday bash. Um, and I just want to credit our communications and community engagement manager, Jillian Chapman, who is here um, with her incredible um, management of the program. Later in correspondence, you'll see a letter specifically from the Fourth of July Day Committee um, with Jillian's name identified as, you know, she, it, the event wouldn't have happened without Jill's leadership. Um, she has facilitated meetings, kept timelines going, um, you know, uh, distributed project management responsibilities and taken a lot of her own. Um, this year, it was right-sized, I think, in relation to her job and also the rest of the responsibility she has for the library. Um, and still, comments from Mark Dewitt, Dewart, among others in the community um, just shared, just really rave comments about her impact on the project, and we had over three thousand people in attendance. Thanks to trustee Graziano, who helped um, pass out some of our glow sticks, which we use to count people that were there. I mean, a teen volunteer there, which we're trying to give more teens more volunteering experiences. And as a result of our participation and Jill's leadership in this very successful event, the um, Fourth of July Day Committee donated two thousand dollars to the library. And so that money will be put back into outreach and community engagement, just to keep that cycle going um, to increase the quality of um, more engagement and outreach to the Lake Bluff uh, residents. So I just want to acknowledge um, a job exceptionally well-done by Jill. It was my first birthday bash. I'd never been there before, and boy, those fireworks, let me tell you, they were the best. And then the last thing I will say is that um, we have a new printer. We have two new printers, and we are exceedingly excited about that. Um, kudos to Martha O'Hara, who so um, sardonically created this uh, Good Night Sweet Prince um, uh, social media uh, image, which did really well on social media to share that it lived twelve years of its life here, um, which is by far the longest I've ever heard of a copier living. Um, and so we are, staff are thrilled about this new printer copier. I actually have a one-on-one training scheduled for one of our staff members to, later on this week, to learn how to print our checks that you will all sign every month with the new printer. Um, so it is going exceedingly well. Um, and, and with that, um, that is my board report, um, except to say that if you dive into the statistics, our numbers just keep going up. Um, I'm, Bonnie actually asked me about September, two thousand twenty-three visits. She was surprised to see such a huge spike in attendance. And I explained to her, I, I'm not surprised. I mean, first of all, I've been here. I know how busy we are. It's a brand-new school year. We see a huge influx of um, people who come to the library. Students for Forest Bluff come to the library as part of their classroom experience. They make regular class visits. We're their library. Um, in addition to that, our youth services department had a lot of wonderful programs in September that brought families in. We did storytime again this September. We were on a break. Um, I, I really truly believe that this is an accurate number. Um, and we double-checked, of course. And in addition to that, you'll see more programming, uh, more people in attendance at that program. Um, our digital uh, collection, it's not surprising that that goes down a little bit because especially as, you know, people are back from their vacations, they might be getting back to a regular routine of work, um, which might not involve as much um, ebook reading or audiobook listening as well. Um, and then as you continue, I just want to share one more statistic, which is um, on page, let's see. Where are you? Yep, so um, our database usage typically goes down in this time, too. But as you can see, it's cyclical, so I'm looking at the three-year database usage on the last page of the statistical report. Um, but what I'm pleased to see is that our averages are higher than they were even two years ago. So just in terms of the amount of usage we're seeing, even though it was less than last month, these, you know, these bar charts are higher than they have been in the past, and so staff are actively promoting. Hi, how are you?
I was trying to sneak in, but it doesn't work.
It's great to see you. Yes. So, no, it's not. It's not. Are you here for the Friends meeting? Yes. And so we already did the resolution.
And I was afraid of that, but I had a very.
Oh, I'm.
I loved it when I was here and saw the school calls. That I couldn't get out of the middle getting rest.
Of course, and so do you mind if I finish my Director's Report and then we'll open?
No, I expect you to stop.
We appreciate you, Ruth. It's okay. It's okay. It's good to see you. Yeah, absolutely. So I just wanted to share with you that our databases and our online resources are getting more engagement month to month than compared to even two years ago, and we're promoting things like our consumer reports, our LinkedIn libraries, um, resources. These are very valuable resources to the library, so. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments about the Director's Report. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So no questions uh, seem to be forthcoming, so that takes us to committee. Oh, sure, yes, let's, let's go back to opportunity to address the board for our former former, former board member and current member of Friends of the Library, Ruth Schnell, who just joined us.
I was a secretary, did you know that?
Yeah, I know. You passed it on to me.
I remember. You know, so. Well. Okay, I'm ready, hi.
Good.
Then I'm starting.
Good.
Yeah, I'm gonna see. Um, the, the. There's a video, yes, it was a, as you recall, the light moving on about the where in the book stuff, there was an episode. Just. There was so much, I didn't know until ages, I couldn't find it, I must have been thirteen, fourteen. You might have known anything else about that. By Russian Russian.
Oh.
That was very nice. I know the end of all.
We did. Um, Lake Bluff represented really well, and, and that was the one with Secretary of State Genulius, right? I was there, um, and I think we had about fifteen, the twelve or fifteen Lake Bluff attendees. When you registered, you had to select that you were from Lake Bluff or not. And so there were other larger libraries that had less attendance than us, so that was really exciting to see.
And we didn't even have any incidents that got out.
Um, we have, no.
So they gave, they gave them this many. And we were proud of the police. That integration was strong and other comments.
Mm-hmm.
And we weren't there, but not threatening. When you.
Mm-hmm, very supportive, very supportive.
Oh, you know, this is very good.
Well, thank you for your. Thank you for your comments.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks, Ruth. Thanks for being here.
I appreciate you.
All right, so um, next on the agenda is committee reports, so. I guess first, um, the list of those that met um, the building and grounds, and um, all I can tell you is that we, uh, we met, um, Sandy and I met with Renee on August thirtieth, is that correct? Is that our most recent meeting?
No, I think.
No, I think we had, we had no one in September, didn't we?
Yes, yes. It was only a few weeks, yeah, it was the Wednesday, October four.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
And um, we actually went through a fair amount of um, action items and, and, well, we gave a lot of advice to Renee about, um, Renee was, was good enough to bring us a uh, bring to our attention a, a fix, another repair of many that um, she had recently gotten a, a bid for, and it was just under ten thousand dollars. So according to our uh, new rules, she could have just made an executive decision, but she brought it to us anyway. And we felt that it was something that needed to be done. It has to do with the um,
HVAC.
The, the HVAC problems that we've been having. It's the last part of the um, of, of the repair of the exhaust slash intake problems on the east end of the building. So that's going to be taken care of. Um, we also discussed how um, in one of uh, the walkthroughs we've had with the building quality, we learned that our exit signs were um, not the best. And some, in fact, were, would be subject in fire to melting, which is not what you want to have happen. And so um, it was recommended that we replace all the exit signs, which we endorsed.
The five, yeah.
Yes, five, five remaining. And um, there was one more thing. Sandy, can you? Can you remember what? There was one more thing. And do you remember?
I do. So um, one of the things that I learned recently is that the library has not had our backflow um, tested in over three years. There is a, um, and I learned this by trying to figure out how to turn the sprinklers off.
Some backflow, just, just to so you know, that sort of, I, I, when I heard that, I said, what? Yeah, it has to do with the sprinkler system, both the interior sprinklers, sprinkler system and the um, landscape sprinkler.
And the fire suppressant, suppressant system. So those two systems have to be tested um, every year. It's a state mandate. I brought the mandate. I brought the language to them all to see. Um but I learned this because I had talked to um Lindy from the museum, a wealth of knowledge. In trying to figure out how to get our sprinklers off. They are since turned off today. They've been flushed out and we will not run into any frozen pipes or anything going on with that. Um but what I found was that after calling the company that manages the backflow and talking to the village, who no longer has. They don't have any permits on file for us or um essentially, it's not a permit, but they have the certification of getting the backflow tested every year. Um we haven't had it since two thousand twenty in March, which is right when Lindy left. Um and so uh that needs to happen. But as I found out today from the sprinkler system. You don't test the backflow until you turn the water back on. So we will be um turning the water back on in spring for our our sprinkler system. And ask after it is turned back down, then I will be working to get it tested. Um so we will be fully in compliance with that mandate um for pub for um backflow systems. And the last thing we talked about was air quality testing. Um and the building and grounds committee was supportive.
Right, right. So the the decision there was Renee was going to investigate um companies that would do that and what the cost would be and so forth. So we're we're moving along slowly but surely trying to get through checklist, which is extensive. But we've done a lot already. Okay, and then the other um committee that met was uh HR. So that was.
Yes, uh we met on October third. Um and we actually had a guest. Our trustee Friedman came and presented to us um about uh. A staff appreciation program um on behalf of the trustees. Um so uh trustee Friedman and trustee Jardine are working on a proposal that they'll be presenting at the next quarter. So we also discussed um something you for that. That was really wonderful. And then. Um we're also, we have a survey that's going to be going out to trustees and to staff as a follow-up to the sixth month. Uh Renee's six-month evaluation and just to see, get feedback on how we work on the survey work and if anyone has any suggestions. So I will be getting that up as soon as possible. Um and then there is also maybe something in your business. Your goals.
Yes, that um. Were deferred to next month.
Oh, yes, the director of trustee will be presenting next month. Um so I think that was everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um any comments about committee work?
We have um the finance committee and the technology.
Oh, okay.
And I mean, I could give an unofficial report. I'm not a member of any committee. Um but given that I was in attendance, I will share about the finance committee. Um having met in September, um one of the topics of discussion was the. The quotes for the cleaning service. Um I am in the process of trying to find desperately a new service for our cleaning of our building. Um we've even gotten comments from patrons about the quality of our cleaning, which is not good. We've had a lot of staff, we've had a lot of issues with our current company. And um the direction was to keep getting more and more quotes. Um I have moved forward in that work and as of Thursday or this Thursday at the finance committee, I may have. Um at least two more uh quotes to share. Um that was one topic that was discussed. We also talked about um the timeline for budgeting. So uh we talked about when the library director presents a draft budget to the board. Well, first to the finance committee and then to the board. Um and we kind of solidify that timeline. Um lastly, what we talked about um. At the technology committee, I'll I'll move to that one. We talked about the cost for security cameras. I was tasked to get a quote for security cameras, just a very rough and writing quote, just to see what we were. Trying to identify in terms of cost for that. Um and we were able to get a quote from CBI, our current technology and inner internet provider or not, or internet provider. Our technology services provider that we outsource, um since we don't have a technology manager on site. And the cost for security cameras alone would be, um and I only asked for ten. And again, I didn't ask for any specific specs or anything, just the security cameras, interior and exterior of ten, total ten. Would be fifteen thousand dollars. Um if we wanted to secure the um and alarm the doors, interior and exterior staff doors. Um with an additional program, um which was police chief's recommendation on some of the various. Um safety modifications we can make to the building to improve our safety experience. He listed a bunch, but that was one of the things to alarm the doors. That would be an additional, according to CBI's quote, an additional fifteen thousand. So in total, um approximately thirty to thirty-five thousand for um the equipment, the software to manage the security cameras. And that is before we even address anything like a monitor, if we wanted real-time monitoring for the security cameras. Um the quote they gave was really just a record, um a system that allows you to record and then view what was stored. It's not re- you know, real time. So um you know, that I think is an incredibly low estimate based on what. Maybe perhaps our needs might be or our wants might be in terms of security cameras. Um and I myself now would recommend having eleven, um one being at the um the book drop. Um I hadn't considered that before, but I think that we could potentially, because what we've run into in the past are cars driving into the book drop. Um damaging the book drop. Um and it's very common for libraries to have a security camera around the book drop. Since it is locked and there are library materials in it. Um so even from the initial quote, there are some potential. Uh add-ons that I would recommend as we. Oh, no, I think we would probably have to work with the village in a utility pool. Mm-hmm. There are a couple of pulls right there that we could potentially use, but haven't even jumped into that, but I I do think it could be worth a discussion.
And then with the cameras that you you there is that, that doesn't include insulation and that's just the visible cameras.
It was just to get a quote to see, I think there were conversations at the foundation meeting recently about, you know, what might be some capital improvement projects? What might these cost? Um you know, just to get a dollar amount starting. That's the finance and technology committee. And then I can do the same thing for the bylaws and policy committee. Um Ally sent me notes um that she was going to have Bonnie share, um but she was unable to attend as well. Um Matt and I and Ally Freedom and Matt to discuss um our current policy uh work. And I just want to acknowledge trustee Graziano, who has since left the committee, but has done a lot of work already. On on the collection development policy and researched other libraries and identified a couple of areas where we might want to address changes. Obviously, staff will be working as part of the policy review for the library's collection development policy and others. But the board committee wanted to do what they can to get a head start on some of this work. And so different committee members took a policy and did research on that. Matt um took on the um. Computers, the computer policy, I that's not the official word. Um I believe it's a computer policy. And then um trustee Freedom and reviewed the personnel policy. Um just in terms of her own background and what she knows about HR and administration, she found a bunch of things. But in terms of overall policy work, that has been kind of, it's moving slower than some of the other priorities of the library recently. Um and then the last thing I'll say is I brought a work-from-home policy draft to the committee. Um and there was some really good discussion about the value of work-from-home policy for libraries, especially small public libraries such as ours. Where we have a limited amount of staff space. There, we talked about how jobs are scoped differently and how some jobs are not. Possible to work from home and other jobs are. And anything that's related to customer service requires that priority to be in building. And at the same time, there might be opportunities to support a more flexible work environment for various needs. Whether it's disability, whether it's learning, whether it's um childcare, I mean, all of that, whether it's being sick. Um and so we just kind of talked philosophically about having a work-from-home policy. I have an updated policy draft to the ne- to the committee next month. And then with, if that is approved, that draft and my director memo will come to the full board for discussion and potential approval. At November meeting. So I think that's.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That tapes us um up to. The financials, September financial reports. We've got the documents prepared. Is there anything in particular that you would like to point out with the?
I was told to keep this short. Um and also, I think we're going to defer some topics later on in the meeting to next month anyway. Um but I will still um be brief. Um the main thing I wanted to highlight with revenue was the passports. You will notice that um because of the staffing that we've discussed and um the two full-time staff members that um have had extended leaves. Are also two pass, two of our three passport agents. Um so the revenue we've brought in for passports is less than we typically received in the past. But again, I want to support the well-being of staff in an open building. So I've I've been okay making these uh decisions and deferring passports to. Um other libraries during this really challenging time for staffing. Um we're also really ahead of the game in our property taxes. Um we've received almost seventy percent now. That is always a welcome sight. Um and uh we're actually ahead of our budgeted amount of revenue. For our rental fines. And this is the amount of money that we take in for um. People who do not live in Lake Bluff proper. So if they're in unincorporated, that money. Is reflected in this line of revenue. And so a lot of people in unincorporated are interested in the library card. I mean, we know the value of it. But the word is getting out and I think this is a lot higher than we typically see. That's wonderful. Wonderful. So, yeah, there's that too. Also, our interest, we already knew that our interest was a low um. A low estimate and it it is um doing exceedingly well um as it continues to grow. Um we're almost seven, you know, seventy-one percent as to where we thought we might be. So I see the interest for the library only increasing beyond what we had budgeted. Um in terms of expenditures. I just want to highlight that um we had a a significant amount of costs paid this month. For um uh medical insurance. And so what we unfortunately found was that, I don't know if you remember Bill and Janie and Jenny. Our um our uh accounting firm was not shoring up the cost for medical insurance at a monthly rate. They were waiting to charge us and send us the invoices for our medical insurance until maybe six months had gone by. And so I was constantly receiving zeros on the expenditure list and we didn't know why, but it was because they weren't um reconciling month to month. But Tina and I had asked them, please reconcile medical insurance costs month to month so that we know. Um and that can be reflected here. Well, Laurent, our administrative associate, found that they were not doing that still. And so July through September or June through September wasn't being, wasn't, we weren't being invoiced. So um I think you're going to see a substantially larger amount next month. Um because we had essentially not been charged for our medical insurance. So Sandy, you're new. I'll just give you a little bit of background. The village manages, we're part of um with the village as a member of a consortium that purchases benefits collaboratively with other municipalities. So we have a competitive rate and so the village pays for the medical insurance. And then we get charged and we reimburse the the village with our particular amounts based on our staffing and so forth. And so they were just sitting on the invoices and not sending them to us so that we could properly pay them. Um and have that reflected in our monthly expenses. So it's not any more or less than we should be paying. It's just a really unfortunate process that we would like to see changed, but um they haven't taken that feedback yet. Well, oh yeah, the last thing I was going to say is in um building and maintenance, you all know, you've approved additional funds to use for building and maintenance projects. So um that line will be overspent as per your direction. Um and we're already at seventy-three percent for building and maintenance. We've gotten a lot of work done since the beginning of the fiscal year. Um and so I'm really, you know, appreciative of the board's support there because it's been needed. And I'm happy to answer any other questions relating to the financials at this time.
Uh with none uh appearing, do I have a motion to approve the September detailed revenue and expense report?
Uh oh, I think to approve the September detail.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second? Thank you, Sandy. All right, I guess we need to have. Roll call mode, yes.
Trustee Jarkin. Trustee A. Trustee Church.
Hi. The uh September detailed revenue and expense report has been accepted or approved. Okay, so now we get to look at the monthly checks.
There's only one I'm going to highlight and it's because both Bonnie and Bill asked me. And so I thought, I'll just share it with everybody. So um there is a quite large check of over fourteen thousand dollars for Computer View Inc. Computer View Inc. is ours, is CBI. They are our technology services. They provide um our computer services. They manage when our computers break. They're the ones that we buy a new computer through and they set it up and configure it. We need to add an Adobe license. They help with that. They do small things and and very large things for us. Um the reason this is more than my director authorization is because this is actually an itemized list of multiple things. That CBI has done for us in the month. So we have our regular contract with CBI. That's our regular um amount that we are charged quarterly. And then on top of that, the eleven thousand, um one thousand five hundred is the cost of a new computer for Jill, Ian. Um who had a computer break in the last um month or two. Actually, it was longer, but this was when they were able to get it. Um and so we do not have a computer replacement plan. We do not have computers on site to um just put right back out there after computer breaks. And it was um approaching its end of life anyway, as all of our computers are actually. So this is including the cost of the computer as well as the laptops. Um the new staff laptops for our our four or five staff that work from home, that total was less than ten thousand, which I approved. But together, all of that is more than my my authorization of ten thousand dollars, which is why um they had questions. So very legitimate. And here you can see the last one, medical insurance, dental, vision, forty-four thousand.
Yeah.
That's the very, very, very high cost because we were not being invoiced monthly.
All right, does anybody else have any comments, questions to make about the checks? Hey, I uh would look for then a motion to approve the September monthly checks. Number fifteen, seven, seven, seven through fifteen, eight, oh, two, including several voided checks. Seventeen, fifteen, seven, fifty-one, fifteen, seven, seventy-six.
That was the printing with our new printer, the first print of of with our new copier. So the um they're going to bring in a trainer to help us figure out how to print checks with our new very smart copier. And um yeah, so I was like, oh, Laurent, we have free training.
Okay.
That's covered. Let's just bring them on in and show us how to do it.
I was just going to say, we usually have one, one voided check and then we we eliminated that.
Now there's, this was um a user error. I have to um uh ex 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 solid saying Laurent is fantastic. This was um a user error. I have to um uh ex- ex- excel it saying Laurent is fantastic. And also um the village uh did a great job helping us run the checks again in a way that um met the parameters of B S and A, so we weren't in trouble with the software. It didn't yell at us.
Great. So that takes us back to the need for a motion to.
Okay, our our motion to approve the September checks.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. And so the checks have been approved. Thank you very much. So that brings us to new business. And um given that there is just barely a forum tonight, there are a couple of things on the list. Um, one is the discussion of the draft director letter and library hours. Renee would like to explain the background on um seeking to change the library hours, but we would like to defer to November to take the vote on it because I think this is kind of a an important thing that more than four of us should be here for.
The other thing um with the new system that's in place now, you'll you'll be able to have, you'll be able to get the whole data.
Yes. So um do you want me to give my spiel or should I wait to do it next month?
It's completely up to you.
Well, okay, so what I was going to say just briefly, I'll say, I'll give like the thirty-second version. We have new equipment that is able to very sophisticatedly tell us when our peak times and when our low times are in the building. We didn't have that previously. We had a door count that just cumulatively added how many people were coming through the door. So we had no way of being able to assess from a public standpoint, what is the need of staffing to address those really high traffic times? I learned in some of these conversations with staff and with Bonnie um and others that the library at one point did not, was not open every single evening, Monday through Thursday. Um, it turned out that this board um with my predecessor at the helm um decided to reopen the library post-COVID, so two thousand twenty-one maybe, and expand hours to match and align with our local libraries. But I think in making that decision, there could have been opportunities to at the same time discuss staffing capacity. And if that choice was within the means of the staffing model that we had. It's no surprise, I've talked now two months about our staffing situation. Um, Bonnie has asked me to bring um a staffing analysis to a finance committee meeting, um not Thursday, but next month. Um, and so uh what I'm going to be doing is comparing our F T E with other libraries and comparing the amount of hours that they were open. Um, and you know, I'll just add too, since I first started, um Bonnie and I, she had suggested, well, if we don't have enough staff for the building, one way to lessen the load on staff is to adjust hours. And I will tell you from my librarian heart, that was a pain because we're all, I think that the whole library is about increasing access to the library and not changing hours and reducing. That said, that was at the beginning of my tenure and now I've lived it. We've seen the significant effects staffing and reduced staffing has had for planned and unplanned absences. And what that's done to our ability to move work forward and what that's done to our ability to provide quality customer service. And I've talked to various customer, um various community partners. Kathy O'Hara and I had a wonderful lunch where we talked about things like this. I talked to Dr. Lisa Li Ali at the school district. I've talked to Drew. I've talked to Joanna Rollick. Um, and as I've described some of these challenges, their feedback has been overwhelmingly, the community will understand. Some of them have even said so brazenly, I think they probably already know you're experiencing these issues. And so I think they're right in that assessment because it's not, it it's visible, right? If we don't have two people at that service desk and we have one person running around doing all these things, that's a visible impact to our ability to have customer service available for the community. And also in the youth department, when we don't have anybody there and there are two chairs empty, I mean, that's, that's a visible, you know, change. And so I I think that there is work that um I know there's work that I need to do to give you all the data of where we need to be in terms of an adequate staffing. Kathy O'Hara said it plainly, um, you know, it's like get your house in order first, you know, and then and then move forward. And I think that I really appreciate that approach. And talking to all these community partners gave me the confidence to even consider this as an option. Because not only can we not move work forward, you know, in terms of my performance evaluation, the doing less that I was directed to, that is impossible, that is impossible. Um, the amount of extra staffing at the desk staffs that I've had to do coming in on weekends and um and I think that we are a unique library with a unique set of needs and a unique staff. And the community might expect the same number of hours in operation, but it it we are unable to sustainabili-, you know, have a sustainable staffing model that addresses those similar hours comparing to Lake Bluff or comparing to Lake Forest or, you know, Winneka or whoever. We don't have that staffing model. We just don't. So that was um in a nutshell, the the conversation I wanted to bring today that Bonnie, I should say, wanted to bring today. And given Bonnie's absence, um, you know, I, from a director's point of view, I definitely support the board's decision to defer this conversation. Um, in fact, one of the things that she wanted to make sure was that this topic was on the agenda at least twice, two months in a row. So the community can see that we are talking about this, that we are not rushing into um a decision. Uh, and it will also allow me to bring you very important data of where these gaps, um, we're not gaps, but where these low points are in traffic. And so we can strategically decide what an appropriate schedule of hours might look like for this unique library.
Thank you very much, Renee. Um, since this is an action item on the agenda tonight, we need a uh a motion to defer this until next month. So I would entertain. Thank you, Sandy. Thank you. So um, all in favor? All right, so this um decision will be deferred until next month. Also, the same thing goes for uh part B, the discussion of the patron uh whose one-year anniversary of uh their suspension was this week, I believe.
Yes.
So um, since that is a um also a bit of a tricky topic, we thought that it might be best if we um deferred that until there are more a fuller board.
No, not at all. No. Thank you. This is a public meeting. You're glad to be here. Oh, thank you for asking. You're so good.
So um, I think we're all aware of what that situation is. Yeah, okay. So I also would need, since that's an action item on the agenda, uh, I would also need looking for a motion to defer this one to next month.
A motion to defer.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Thank you, Sandy. Okay, all in favor? Great, okay.
Can I add that I will follow up with staff and our new legal representation about what to do legally between now and November? Um, the date is actually tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. Why? Actually, it says right here.
Okay.
And the la- and the letter was issued on the eighteenth. So one year from that is the eighteenth, which is tomorrow. So I need to find out what we can legally do um between now and next month. And so I will follow up with um Bonnie, our lawyer, staff, and um provide that direction.
That would be very helpful, considering we have a new.
Yeah, well, and actually Bonnie is not here to talk about it, but she's already gotten specific direction from a lawyer, which she was going to present today.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sure. Okay, so next up is discussion of the property tax levy for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
So each year, um, the uh village goes through with what's, you know, with real estate taxes and takes in consideration um what the uh cost of living of the CPI factor uh is going to be. Super price index takes a lot of different factors into into place. And typically, as a library, we we follow whatever the the village has has done. With the exception, I think it goes back to maybe it's two thousand and twelve. When um we had a major renovation or major uh repair to the roof and had to go and ask for more. And since that point, we've elected to sort of take the maximum that we 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 followed the village in order to sort of build up our so over the uh the last few years. So it's coming up, um that we need to to vote on what we want to do for this year. Uh, the attachments in the in the packet would indicate the max or the what the village is looking at, the the max is five point two seven three. And so we have to vote tonight whether or not we're going to follow that recommendation or take something less uh or take something more. I think uh at this point, we we take the maximum that we can. We we know we've got repairs and things like that to the library. We know we've got staffing needs. We've got um we've we've got a consulting group that's going to come back and come back with recommendations on staffing positions. So uh that would be my recommendation based on that. Another factor is whatever you don't take this year, you kind of lost. Cause if you come back next year for five percent or whatever it is, five, two, three, you kind of lost that. Like the same going forward, which for us would be about, I mean, fifty thousand dollars.
May I add a couple? Thank you so much, Bill. Um, one of the things that I wanted to share is that um just a couple of days ago, we received notice that the village um board finance committee is making the recommendation to the village board to not go with the five point two seven three. Several years ago, they had voted um on making a promise to the community that even if um the CPI is more than five percent, they they will not um increase the, increase the levy by more than five percent. Now traditionally, the library has followed the village, as Bill was saying, um, kind of in step on pay, uh in the section fourteen with the financials. Um, you'll even note that we have several years back in the in the table um where it has the green, the yellow, the blue, and the orange. Um, several years back, um, you can see that the village and the library did not even max out at the five percent or even max out at whatever the CPI was. In some years, they levied much less. And so that is growth that is lost, as Bill is saying. Now, the village has this promise, this vote to the community to no longer, to not increase more than five percent. At the time of that vote, it was explicitly stated that the library was not included in that. We are home rule, we are separate from the village. However, politics as they are, I'm looking at Ruth here, um, politics as they are, the board historically has always followed in steps um of the village. And at the same time, not increased beyond that particular year of the roof. So the village board and the village finance committee is recommending to the village board that they will only levy five percent. And so I wanted to share that with this group. Strategically, Bonnie and I and Bill and I have talked separately about what we gain in following in step with the village this year. I think that we gain um transparency and camaraderie in their promise to the community. I also think that there are strategies of having meetings with Regis and Drew and the finance committee and telling them what we're learning in all of these reports about our increased costs to the library. We can do that to build more understanding of the village board into next year's levy. So I think one strategy is, and one that I might recommend of the, to the board, levy the full five percent. Bonnie and I meet with, and potentially you, Bill, um, meet with Regis and Drew and the finance committee and explain this is why we're making this decision this year. And next year, we are going to be asking for something different, given all of our needs. We're going to keep you updated. We're going to talk to you about what we're finding out. Drew has invited me to present to the village board. Um, and he thinks that that could be very good to do right before budget planning time next year so that we can talk about all of the library's needs. I think we gain a lot politically by keeping in step for five percent this year. At the same time, going forward, I think next year, we build the understanding of why we might not be in step one year for a larger adjustment to address the disparities of our financials. So I just wanted to add that.
That's that's good. I mean, we, like you said, we've always followed what the village is. So the village is not going to do the five point two seven three. Probably does make
And we have a new board here at the library. Um, I really think there, there's a value added to telling the bo- the village board what it is that we're learning. Um, our salary benchmarking report, we're going to have hard data to show what the increase is going to need to be in that salary line to ma- you know, match and step. Um, all of these building reports, um, and potentially even getting more estimates like our windows. We have the HVAC um uh costs appropriated for five, ten, fifteen years. We know what those are.
We've got the capital plan.
Capital plan. And they were very clear in that report. In Burge Anderson, we looked at it again at our last building and grounds committee. In the next five years, they estimate over a hundred thousand dollars for addressing the things that they covered in that report. And that was almost a year ago. And that was before inflation. You know that those costs are only going to rise. So that is my recommendation of the board for this year.
So then um we need to take a vote then to uh.
So I will entertain a motion to uh determine the tax levy for the library to be five percent for the twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Oh, you'll.
Then for the property tax levy for twenty twenty-three to the twenty-four to the finals.
Thank you. Anybody second? Thank you, Sandy. And I guess we need a whole poll vote for this one too. Okay, the uh motion passes, so we will ask, we will be in lockstep once again with the village and go for a five percent uh tax increase.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, that takes us to the D sixty-five intergovernmental agreement. We, we already took care of the one fifteen.
Correct.
That's, I was just thinking.
You're right on.
Yeah.
This is another.
So um I, Sandy, I don't know if you're aware of what what this is. Okay, um, this is because there are kids in both sixty-five and one fifteen who live within those school districts but do not live within the library district. We have an agreement with both districts to, and also of to provide um library cards at no charge to kids who are enrolled in those school districts. And uh we, it's something that we have to uh revisit every year. There is a reciprocal agreement because they, they pay us, uh the the districts pay us a certain amount of money and also allow us. I I'm not sure that we've ever actually used this. I I'm not sure that we've ever actually used this, but they they allow us some use of their space if we ever need it. So um and it it's something that, you know, I I feel pretty strongly about, and I think everybody else did when we adopted this. It had not been the case for a few years, and then we brought it back. Um, yeah, I know. I felt the same way. And uh so as far as I'm concerned, this is kind of a slam dunk that that we vote to approve this agreement for one more year.
One of the benefits of Lake Bluff specifically having this program is that because we have so many kids who are in the district, but they're living in unincorporated, this provides them with library access as under the IGA program umbrella. So their family may still want to purchase a library card for the grownups, but for for the kids, if they are enrolled in the school program, and even though they're in unincorporated, they are covered with library access, which I think is a wonderful cooperative collaborative partnership.
Great.
Okay, so how did they pick up elaborate? How do we make sure we did they get that?
Yes, so um Katie, are you on the call?
Yes, I am.
Um, I'm wondering if we can increase the volume just a little bit. Thank you. Um, I know you've been working super hard at getting these out and your whole team. It's a collaborative effort. Could you briefly describe the process for the distribution?
Yes, so um the quote-unquote easiest way is we have all of the um we have all of the IGA cards that haven't been picked up yet, all of the new cards that have been created each school year. Those are stored behind the circulation desk, and then the students can come in with a parent, the parent presents an ID, and we they um fill out an application similar to our regular library card applications, and then we give them the card right there. Um, in the past, um I have worked with Eliza to bring the cards to um school events or to work with the um, you know, one of the school librarians or something. For them, they will uh hang on to the cards and then pass out the applications to students. Students return the applications, you know, they pick up the cards, and then the the schools will send the completed applications to us so that we have that information. In the, that requires more uh coordination, obviously, between us and the school libraries, so it's not something we've been able to do every year. Um, we did do it last year, um and we did have um multiple students pick up their cards that way, but typically, the um the most frequent way we have people come in is just stopping by the desk to pick up their card, and we will also be doing um we'll also be advertising the IGA program, I believe, in the winter newsletter. Um, so we are going to be able to get the word out um to more people, and so we hope to see that have an impact as well.
I was just how about how many uh students pick up their card as opposed to like how many are available for them?
Oh, boy, I, you know, I would have to, I would have to pull some numbers. I don't, I honestly don't have it off the top of my head, but I can look into that.
Yeah, and Katie, can I just pop in for one second?
Absolutely.
I just want to mention that uh the majority of the kids who are in the IGA program already have their IGA cards, so it is simply a matter of that card being renewed. Um, it is a much smaller amount of children who are new to the district or entering into kindergarten for the first time who would be picking up their brand-new IGA cards. So the vast majority of the students who are enrolled in the IGA program, their card is just renewed.
I think that your question, though, Jenny, is a good one. Um, we had a similar program at my last library, and a lot of libraries have programs like this. And so to compare the percentage of how many kids are eligible for the program and then how many actually participate, you know, we really want to see that percentage increase, you know, year to year communication efforts, you know, that's why we're putting it in the newsletter. It goes to every six zero zero four four home, um but it is an opt-in program. So, you know, if they choose not to come and pick up their card, they don't have access. So I appreciate the staff, like doing the community engagement, the outreach to give out and distribute the cards at the school visit. Um, you know, it helps reduce barriers that way, families that can't come on site or have different availabilities. Um, but you know, also staffing is involved, you know, and being able to go out to these visits, too. Um, but I think that the team does a really good job with our current means of staffing to get the word out, and as our strengthening relationship with the school, as our school relationship increases and strengthens, there could be opportunities for the schools to promote it more. I don't know, Katie and Eliza, do they do this at all already?
And I'm just curious, I like, I'd just love to know what the numbers are, because I feel like sometimes with these programs, getting someone to fill out the application can sometimes be the hardest part to actually getting the cards.
Yes.
So I was just curious to know, like, what the numbers were. I think it has it's more to do with, I would just be curious to know what are the numbers and what are what are the challenges for those families? Not not that the staff is not, not that the library is not providing the program the best they can. But what are the challenges for those families to get the cards and be able to use that?
I think that, you know, from my experience, a lot of it has been um well, in previous libraries, it's a lot of times working parents who don't, can't come to the library. Language is a barrier, culture can sometimes be a barrier. You have new families to the country that have different understanding of what a public library even is, or the idea that filling out an application with your private information might be um a concern. And so in my experience with student card programs, those are a lot of barriers that we see. You know, I've worked with cultural family liaisons where I do, you know, visits directly to those families through the liaison, so that the liaison can help build understanding. I think a big, a big issue potentially for us is this perception of being out of district and unincorporated at versus being in Lake Bluff. Um, I think that there's just a lot of either misinformation or not people understanding that you can live in unincorporated and still get a library card if your kid is enrolled in these schools.
Well, it might not even be an issue, like the number might be very small.
Yeah.
I just am curious to like know what the numbers are, and if they're bigger. And depending on where they land, are there ways that we can bring instruments to help and work with the school?
Yeah, can I?
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, can I add one more thing? I'm sorry, Jenny, I don't have numbers for you. Um, but I will just mention that we do work with Jen Prozumont at the school. I can't remember what her current title is, but she is um an English as a second language specialist at the school, so she does help us um with the communication aspect for parents who might have a first language of Spanish. Specifically.
Yeah, and we have applications in Spanish, right, Katie? Katie?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, we do.
Looked through a couple of windows. Yes, we do have applications in Spanish.
We'll get that um those statistics for you for next month. I think it honestly, it's a lot of the same questions I've had, as I've learned about, you know, from Katie, how the program has been going, so.
Yeah, and it might be a really small number of people that are beginning, that's great.
Thank you, Jenny. Thanks, Eliza, thanks, Katie.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other discussion of the IGA with District sixty-five? All right, then I will be looking for a motion to um approve this year's D sixty-five IGA.
A motion to approve D sixty-five intergovernmental agreement.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Sandy. All right, um, all uh all in agreement? Five. Any opposed? Great, okay. So that will be signed off on. And that takes us to some library correspondence that we wanted to share with us.
It's really fun putting together the correspondence section every month, because I think it gives you a um an insight into the impact of the library and how the residents themselves are feeling about the service and and the experience. So the first one is the birthday bash letter, which I referenced earlier. Thanks to the library team, we really appreciate how Jillian um produces the bash, and I really think the word produces is um very specific here, because she really um she produces the a lot of it, and so um thanks to Jill. Um, and in addition to that, I wanted to address um a letter from former trustee of the library, Joan Cordenese. Um, she sent me a lovely message um about her experience um using our brand-new uh wave-the-hand buttons to open our accessible doors. Have you experienced them, Ruth? You love them. That's what Jo- that's what Joan says basically, too. Yep. Yeah, when she talks about, you know, whether it's, you know, you're, you have a walker or a cane or you're wearing, you know, carrying a bunch of books or a toddler. Um, so I I think that, you know, I was really appreciative that she took the time to do this, and especially as a former trustee and a former president of the Friends of the Library, um, you know, her voice is very valued, but also I think representative of what a lot of people are experiencing at the library, so you know, I I'm really excited to see improvements continue on at the library for accessibility for all abilities. So I'm happy to share that with you as well. And then um just as we have in previous months, um I'm sharing with you some suggestions from the community through our comment cards. Um, two of these comments are related to feedback that we got um for the trivia program that we offer through the brewery. Um, for the last two months, because of staffing, um I just want to acknowledge Jill and Katie, they have led the trivia program themselves. It's usually staffed by three staff members, given the huge amount of people that are there. Jenny's nodding her head, she's been a former participant of the trivia. Um, but Jill and Katie have taken on that responsibility for the last two months themselves. And so we wanted to explain why there are only two staff members several months, and so we did talk about staffing. And so right away, we have people suggesting, well, if you charge people to come, um, not that we could do that as a free public library, um but we certainly know people love trivia, and um I think this is just in my mind, representative of the generosity of spirit of Lake Bluff. Um, and potentially uh maybe even, you know, the idea that they might support, you know, future funding opportunities of the library if they were willing to say something like this. And then in addition to that, just, you know, seeing, you know, comments like, we love you, that's why we do what we do. Um, while we can only do what we can with our current staffing, you'll see this is yet another suggestion for weekend um hours and weekend programming. Last month, we talked about um uh increasing earlier weekend hours um to help with morning. Um, and you know, this is now people asking for kids' programs on the weekend. So this is to me, again, just more evidence that we need to very smartly and strategically look at staffing, because our community is wanting more, but we're just not able to give it at this time. So, thank you.
Yes, and just curious, in the letter that you wrote, you drafted that it was Sunday hours that you're looking at, right, or that's just?
So that
I know we're talking about it next month, but like when she mentioned that she's looking for more weekend, not that she's looking for more hours, but
We do. I'm happy to open up um the mic to Eliza if you want to address this. We do have some weekend programming for kids and families on Saturdays.
Yeah.
Do you want to give a couple of examples, Eliza?
Yeah, we have chess club, which actually just happened this last Saturday, um and it does really well on Saturdays during the school year. Uh, it does better on weekdays during the summer when there's a lot of sports to compete with. Um, and also sensory story time, and I tend to put our um preschool um entertainers, usually uh singer and entertainers on Saturdays as well.
Yeah, those are really fun. I love your Saturday news.
What I've found at my previous libraries is that we could program until our faces are blurred, and the family would want more, and I think this is also indicative of Lake Bluff. There are so many opportunities for engagement, you know, over the summer I saw, you know, the the block was always hopping with some sort of events.
Yeah.
And so I I do think that as libraries, we will always see an element of this, but I do think that the the note about weekend programming and for working parents, that's going to continue coming up. Um, because we see so many caregivers coming to the library during the week, so that to me tells me we have so many working parents um that want opportunities over this, the weekend.
Well, and when we did that Saturday story time in the morning, there wasn't significant decrease, lots of people's sport started.
Mm-hmm.
Once COVID and then the sports started picking back up, there was a lot fewer people. But I I just even meant less like the programming, but just like we're looking at cutting Sunday hours altogether, right, in 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 your letter?
Yes, and again, I can, I think everything is on the table for next month. I'm going to um
Really look at the
The whole calendar, yeah. Um, but without the data, we just implemented it last week. Um, one of the pieces of feedback I have about Sunday is that it takes four staff to oh to keep the library open for four hours. There's a person in charge that has to be in the building, and they usually, it's one of the librarians or one of our associates, and they're usually in the back. Um, so if something happens, they are there to address it. The youth services desk, the circulation desk, and the reference desk, so that's four staff members for only four hours, and I think um I could do a cost-benefit analysis with data next month to describe a little bit more of why I think Sundays are while very important, and I would love to bring them back at some point when we have a different staffing model. Um, it's one of the more it's one of the first thoughts I had to get the most amount of hours back into the work week, or at least address some of the other issues that we have.
We don't have any kids' programs then going on, or any programming going on on the Sunday?
Uh, I don't think so. I I know there's puzzle swap, but that's a very um passive program. Um, Eliza, can you verify that? Do we have program?
We don't traditionally have uh programming on Sundays. The puzzle swap is a passive program, and I think would uh thrive most days of the week if we decided to move it.
Historically, it hasn't been a great day for programming.
Thanks, Martha. Thanks, Eliza. Good questions, diving into them.
Hey, thank you very much. That takes us to any and all other business, which may probably come before this board. Does anybody have anything to bring before the board? No, I'm not hearing anything, so I'm looking for a move to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? I. Okay, meeting is adjourned at eight. It's like twenty-eight, eight twenty-nine.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.